Okay. I call the order of the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. Agenda item number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Giant engine. Agenda item number three, Rules of Order. As we just learned, the council files rules of order, which we just voted on, and the meetings will be conducted using Robert's Rules of Order. Agenda item number four, Adoption of the Ellsworth City Council Minutes from the following meeting. None ready for approval will be available at the next meeting. That one was easy. Should have read that before I started reading it online. Agenda item number five, Presentation of Awards. It is Small Business Day Proclamation. Small Business Day Proclamation, November 29th, 2025. Whereas the city of Ellsworth, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, SBA, Office of Advocacy, there are approximately 36.2 million small businesses in the United States in 2025, representing about 99.9% of all firms. Whereas inflation continues to be a dominant challenge for small business owners, with 58% of small business owners reporting inflation as a top concern in Q1 of 2025, new business formations remain strong. From March 2023 to March 2024, small businesses accounted for roughly 89% of net new jobs in the U.S. economy. Whereas research on local spending suggests that when consumers patronize locally owned, independent businesses, a significant greater portion of their dollar circulates in the local economy. One estimate is roughly 68 out of every $100 spent stays local in many U.S. studies. Whereas the city of Ellsworth supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and are vital to the economic health of our community and the nation. And whereas organizations across the country recognize the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday, and encourage Americans to shop small to support independent merchants. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Ellsworth hereby proclaims Saturday, November 29th, 2025, a Small Business Saturday in Ellsworth, Maine, and be it further resolved that the city of Ellsworth urges the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So proclaimed. Do you need to sign this? What's the date? Okay. Agenda item number six, City Manager's Report. Sorry, I had so many papers on here.
How you doing, Charlie?
I'm doing okay. I had a paper with the workshops. There we go.
Don't get nervous.
This is my third city council meeting of the day, so... I just heard they were adding a half hour. One half hour to six hours to every additional Monday of the night. Here my wife, or actually tonight, my babysitter. I'm groaning already. But as Mr. Howen noted, we took these jobs to work. As, you know, I work most weekends very late into the night. I'm up at about 4:30 in the morning doing stuff. Usually push schedule sends on my emails till 8:00 a.m. just to give staff a little break. But there is an incredible amount of stuff to be done with the city council. I'm so excited for our new city councillors to be joining us. You know, kind of structurally, I think this is pretty big. I think, as I noted when councillor Howen was re-elected and Tabitha joined us last year, it was pretty much, you know, Steve stayed in the council and we got a new member of the Arbor Commission with us. So it's pretty, it seemed like it's been almost a year and a half since I've been in the role and it's been a pretty similar councillor. So, you know, losing Chair Beal and Tammy Moat, who are just such incredible councillors and former city officials, as well as John Stein, a business owner, is like, wow, this is a pretty high bar for our new councillors to be coming in on. But also like the quality of the councillors that we're getting in and the new perspective, I'm super excited about how this seven, group of seven are going to come together. I know with, I did watch the candidate forum and I'm so excited for councillor Martino to be with us. You know, experience with the city, with the historic commission, you know, obviously incredible educational and your doctorate, your, I think, classes in public speaking I saw online.
No, I teach public speaking. My doctorate's in history.
Interesting. Doctor in history, teaching public speaking. We all have a lot to learn. I was talking with our communications director about media training and she's like, would the councillors like some media training? I was like, maybe Dr. Martino can give us some media training here too, so...
As long as I don't have to grade it.
That was the other thing, the good wit. I think the council meeting, or the candidate forum, so excited to bring that in here. Not that John Stein didn't have a good wit, but... And then, of course, to have Pat Shea joining in with us. I think, you know, he's 20-plus year military veteran, which I haven't had a veteran on the council in a little while. His state experience, you know, even his citizen comments, all the finance committee meetings he's been tending. He's obviously been taking this extraordinarily serious. I think it's pretty incredible to have, you know, and it's also kind of part of the history of Ellsworth. We're having, as I, another member of sort of the oldest political dynasty here in Ellsworth, the Shea family. I know, I think a family member of yours speaking recently. It was on the council in like 1975 when we were talking about some assessing stuff. So being able to continue that legacy. And then joined as well with Marina Smith. I'd say the newest member of the Ellsworth's newest political dynasty, the Smith family. So we're going to have both sides of that. The oldest political dynasty and, you know, the long history of Ellsworth and service community, and also folks that are newer and taking a real family approach to how much they love this place and how much they want to see it move forward. So just right now, just feeling really great about that. We have a ton of work to be done. We try to keep tonight's meeting somewhat light just to give you all a little bit of time to acclimate as a new council to some new bigger items. The December workshops on December 1st, the first Monday of the month. So we have, we tried to take the school strategic plan discussion. The school superintendent's going to come in for a little update there. Kind of a brief discussion on short-term rentals and some of the general areas. I know there was some disagreement actually at the candidate forum on exactly where to go there. It's, this is really kind of a trial discussion. Obviously no action. Enterprise vehicles and our kind of fleet management system. We've kind of transitioned from a purchase model to a lease model, so we'll have an update on how that's working. An update on StreetScan, which, you know, we did about $2 million in city roads, complemented by about $18 million in state road intersection projects this year. So it was an incredible amount of update. But we also had a LiDAR kind of technologically advanced car and a system come through to go through every stitch of road that we have. So that, you know, as we look to the capital improvement plan, we now have kind of a red, yellow, green of what our worst roads are, what our best roads are, what our process and all 10 miles of sidewalks we have. So really kind of a critical element on how we can maintain that piece of infrastructure. And then, you know, budget, budget, budget. A budget expectations meeting and I'll probably also add discussion on the assessing department. You know, we had a brief conversation last council meeting on a potential outsourced in that area. I think the deputy city manager and I, in response to some of the community feedback and some discussion with some councillors, are going to probably prep an option that could be, you know, what is looking to keep the in-house structure somewhat similar to what it is and maybe add some consulting and contracting services. We had a discussion on TIF funding last week with the contractor that was noting how TIF funding can be used for things like as you're seeing economic development growth in the city for helping to subsidize departments like assessing kind of meet that growth. So, you know, a $600 million valuation increase in five years. You know, how do we create systems to kind of best meet that? And then, and I had just a huge thanks to our clerks teams. I think I'll resubstitute our city clerk, but also, you know, Tina and Caitlin and then also just the staff. Amanda is here, she's going to give an update on the water rates. I mean, over two weeks, we were meeting every day, twice a day, mornings with staff, evening with legal to kind of make sure that entire recount process was as high quality as it could be. Felt like to echo what Steve said at an earlier meeting today, that there's a real sense of camaraderie in the room. People were on different sides of it, obviously, hoping for different expectations at the end, maybe. But it felt like the process was very fair and transparent and collaborative. So it really seems like a credit to the candidates that also lost in there. They were very gracious and like that this was a good process and effectively the recount vote matched what the machine vote was. So I felt like it reinstilled kind of faith in our democratic institutions here in Ellsworth. And the volunteers who put all that together on election night itself, to package all those things up, to do every process, to sign every piece, to seal it, to bring it back here, just in case there is a recount. And sure enough, there was, and we opened the boxes and it shows the hard work and diligence that our teams put into the voting process. So glad we get a little bit of time back, but big thanks, thanks to them. That's it for me. Great. Thank you, Charlie. Agenda item number seven, Committee Reports. Would anyone like to report out from any of their committee activities? Councillor Smith?
I'll just make a note that both cemetery and the historic preservation commissions are meeting this week and the details are available on the city website.
Great. Thank you. Any other councillor, White?
Yeah. I think the Arbor Commission has gotten the most amount of public feedback ever in this history, which is only a few years old anyway. So it was a really eventful month for the Arbor Commission. So in lieu of a lot of the feedback I saw online, as well as some of the emails that came in, I wanted to update everyone on what exactly we have been doing the past couple of weeks. So, over the past month, and actually just the past two weeks really, the Ellsworth Arbor Commission successfully planted roughly 47 new street trees along Washington Street and Foster Street. And this project is part of a three-year federally funded urban forestry initiative through the Inflation Reduction Act, which is focused on improving the urban canopy and the urban canopy around Cardbrook and between High Street and the Union River. So there was a lot of talk about the species and what was planted there. And we did select a diverse mix of species that are hardy enough to handle Maine's tough winters, the road salt, which was a concern of many peoples, and the realities of a busy downtown corridor. Some of the trees are what we call in the industry underwired trees that are smaller growing species, typically flowering, that are specifically chosen to reside beneath utility lines. So this is a very normal, best practice approach in urban forestry, even though I know it raised a ton of concerns on social media and as well as through emails. And I've also seen some comments online suggesting that this project was a waste of city money. And I want to be super clear to everyone out there that this was grant-funded, grant-funded. No city match or taxpayer funds were used. It's part of a federal investment in local communities and is great. I personally believe it's incredible to see those federal dollars coming back into Ellsworth's streets, supporting our residents and our shared environment. These are funds that our community has already paid into, that typically end up in somebody else's backyard, but instead has come back into our community. And I think that's worth celebrating, that we've reinvested right here where we live. Another incredible success of this project was training. Our new parks, recreation, and facilities crew improper tree planting techniques. They learned how to handle trees, how to find a root flare, which anybody that's familiar with trees is the most important part of tree planting, and how to set the right planting depth. These details are incredibly critical to long-term health and one of the reasons why we've seen trees struggle along High Street in the past. And finally, and I think most importantly here, the project brought together about 15 unpaid volunteers who spent four days doing the hands-on labor of the work of planting. So it was an incredible example of community spirit and action. We met neighbors, we worked with local businesses, worked with local clubs and a church in the neighborhood. We received numerous emails and encouragement from residents who were excited to see the investment of trees in their streets. I'm incredibly proud of what the Parks Recreation Crew, the Arbor Commission, and what our volunteers have done together and the partnerships that we are building across city departments and the community. And if anyone would like to learn more about urban forestry and get involved, which we're always looking for people there for future tree planting and care events, please reach out to the Arbor Commission. And that's arborcommission@ellsworthmaine.gov. And we're here to help educate, collaborate, and make sure Ellsworth continues to grow as a beautiful, tree-filled, and environmentally resilient city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your leadership with the Arbor Commission.
Yeah, it's been incredible. This has been a dream of mine and many people here in Ellsworth to see Ellsworth's streets return back to, just going to go on a little spout here. High Street used to be what was known as one of the most beautiful streets in the state of Maine with its closed canopy elm trees that were on it. So we really want to see Ellsworth return back to that status and this is just one step closer in that direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? And I'm sorry you have to follow that one. Okay. Seeing none. Councillor Comments. Agenda nine number nine. This is the moment for councillors to provide comments on matters that are not on the agenda. Oh, I did. Agenda number eight, Citizens Comment. This is the time, meaning where citizens can provide comments for matters that are not on the agenda. We ask that if you'd like to provide a comment, you come to the DS, you provide your name, and you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the new councillors who are here. And thank you for all of your service and for running with the election because it's not a simple task. So, good evening. My name is Cara Romano. I'm the Director of Heart of Ellsworth. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on an initiative that Heart of Ellsworth has been working on for the past year with a few other partners, which I'll talk about in a moment. We're working towards securing downtown Ellsworth's historic district nomination. The Heart of Ellsworth, as some of you may know and some of you may not know, are still familiarizing yourself with city organizations. We're dedicated to strengthening and revitalizing our downtown through stewardship, economic vitality, and the preservation of place. Over the past year, we've been working closely with our consulting partners Kleinfelder to prepare this application. We also have been working with the Ellsworth Historical Society, the Ellsworth Historic Preservation Commission, Maine Historic Preservation Commission, and a local advisory group of dedicated community members to prepare the application. The, this Wednesday night, we will be presenting here in council chambers. And we're here to invite the community, as well as Ellsworth City Council members, city staff, to attend the presentation. We have a PowerPoint prepared to talk about the process and how folks can sort of learn what it means and also to talk about sort of the final steps of the process. I just want to state that this work directly aligns and advances a directive of the city of Ellsworth's 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which calls for celebrating and protecting our historic resources as part of long-term planning and economic development for the city. So as I said, we are here tonight to invite folks to council chambers at 6 o'clock PM as we present the project to the City of Ellsworth Historic Preservation Commission. This will be an opportunity for the public to learn more and ask questions. And just as an end note, we believe that thoughtful historic preservation can coexist with growth, innovation, and a vibrant downtown economy. And this really supports the local buildings and the buildings in downtown, so building owners as well as shop owners, as well as the entire community on a whole. And in case anyone is interested, I have handouts here that will take you directly via QR code, so you can review the application ahead of time. So I will leave these with Ebony. And we will also have copies of that the night of the presentation. So, thank you folks so much.
Thank you, Cara. Any other public comments? Seeing none. We will now move on to councillor comments, number nine. Councillors, please, if you have any comments regarding anything that's on the agenda, now is the time and please keep them to three minutes or less. Councillor Smith?
Yes. I want to take a minute. I was, I want to take a minute and thank councillors O'Halloran and Shea for nominating me for chair. I did not expect that, did not see it coming, could not accept it. But I take it as a real, I guess, vote of confidence and looking forward to a productive and collaborative year ahead. This is going to be my last year leading the nonprofit organization that I've led for 16 years. They're currently looking for a new CEO. I announced it at our summit, middle of October, and I said I'll stay as long as through 2026, but they might fund somebody sooner. So I look forward to continuing as, if the city chooses to continue to serve the city in this role, even beyond retirement. But I really, I want to thank you both for that. I did not see that coming, so, thank you. And I look forward to working with both of you in the coming year.
I figured this would work through. I like to work down this way. So councillor Shea, any comments? But you got it right ahead of you.
Comments?
You don't have to provide councillor comments.
No, I just thank you to the citizens and residents and the taxpayers. We have a lot of work to do. I just thank you and welcome to the other two. They did really, really well in the elections, so...
Okay. Thank you. Councillor O'Halloran?
You know you want to say something.
I do, and I don't want to continue to talk about this, but I think it's really important. The first thing I'd like to say is, Nancy, the reason I thought we should throw your name in the hat is, I don't know if you're going to rerun again and I just wanted to see everyone get their turn. And that's where that came from. I'd like to touch on this election recount again. And I realize we've talked about it a lot tonight, but, you know, it's quite a process when you run for city council and you go to the grand and you go through Candidates Night. And then you had an election that was so close. And then there's a recount. And again, and I know we've talked about this tonight, but the recount process was amazing. I really like the fact, I don't know who come up with this idea, but I applaud the idea of the mock recount. That was almost like an organizational meeting for the recount. And I think that was huge in explaining to the people what it was going to be like and the process that would be followed. And then when the recount came, everybody was, there was such good energy here and there was a lot of work, people counting all day long. And when the end result came, that, you know, the first election and the recount election was virtually the same. There was a change of one here and there, but it was virtually the same. And that is really amazing that you have mechanical counters and then you have human counters. And it was almost identical. And credit to everybody involved in that, whether you participated in the recount, the candidates, what have you. It was an amazing day and everybody should be proud of that. And thank you.
Thank you. Councillor White?
I do have more to say. So I wanted to take a moment to thank the community for how it responded when there was concern about the federal SNAP benefits not going out earlier this month. Here in Ellsworth, I learned through Tina when I was freaking out about this, we have about 1,400 residents that are our neighbors that rely on this help, which is about 15% of our population. And these people, like I said, they're not strangers, they're our neighbors. They're people we work with. They're working families, they're seniors, there's people on fixed incomes and people living with disabilities who just need a little support to get by and in this incredibly tough economy that we're all subject to. And then when that was threatened, Ellsworth didn't wait. Immediately saw restaurants, businesses, nonprofits, and individuals stepped up, did food drives, donation, and outreach to make sure that no one went hungry. It was one of those moments that remind us who we really are and that's a community that shows up for each other. And I really want to thank Tina and our General Assistance Office and all the local partners who helped for the compare and, I'm sorry, for the care and compassion that they show every day. I know it was incredibly emotional for me, someone that doesn't, that's not in that world, stepping into it and thinking about the impact of people not being able to eat here in Ellsworth. And so I'm incredibly grateful to the people that spend and devote all of their time to helping those in need because that's a very tiring job, I would imagine, on the heart, really. But by choosing kindness over judgment and working together, that's what makes Ellsworth stronger and I think that's something we should all be really proud of. And I thought that we ended up getting our SNAP benefits and we're not in that situation. Thanks for everyone who cares for our neighbors and our friends here in Ellsworth.
Thank you very much. Councillor Martino? Is that who I should do it, say it, or how would you prefer to be addressed as with your double name?
Carol.
Carol, councillor Carol.
I made my family call me doctor for three years. I got over it.
Say, Doc, I've got this.
I would just like to say how thankful I am to be here. And I tend to do things, I'm late in life. I went to graduate school late, I'm having a political career late in life and I'm very, very grateful to the people of Ellsworth for giving me this chance. And I want to do a really good job for them. And I also would like to, you know, accrue enough material along the way that I could take it on the road, you know, as a stand-up.
I have no doubt you will get plenty of material.
So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. You already got to go.
I got my turn.
And, yeah, I just want to say how excited I am to work with the new councillors and the longstanding councillors. It's, yeah, it's a big shift, three new councillors, but I'm already just really impressed with how you all ran your campaign and showed that you're ready here to work and you care about Ellsworth. So I look forward to all of us working together with the city staff and the public. And, but with that, I guess it's time to, no more the, you know, we're all great, now let's get to work, so... It's with some unfinished business. Oh, yeah. What did I do? Did I break it? Okay. Thanks. Okay. Unfinished business, number 10. Council Order Number 092508. Public hearing, potential action on a proposed ordinance to provide for and regulate the annual issuance and local licenses for adult-use cannabis establishments and amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code Ordinance, Chapter 14. Licenses and permits to add related licensing fees and verbiage for the proposed ordinance. City Manager?
Yeah, so we were pretty close to the end of the line on this one, but, you know, we had a lot going into the last council and really felt that this one, we should maybe push off to bring back in December for discussion and potential action. You know, with the previous council did a ton of work on this. We've had probably half a dozen workshops or so on it, but want to give this current council, now that they do, the citizens pass this 55-45. So in some ways that triggers the fact that we have to act on this. It's close. In general, just so new folks know, we're sort of aligning on a limit to the number, around three, to be, for a lottery system to come in with some performance standards to make sure we have good operators that pass some thresholds. But if there's more than three that would apply for that license in order to kind of limit not becoming some, like some other cities and towns that just have a ton of these shops that fundamentally change the character of the city, that we'd limit it to three. We've sort of aligned to keep it, I think, in the Clerk's office as opposed to in its own separate chapter, just treat it more like a liquor license, granted with a limit on it. So we get the final response back from legal counsel on kind of where they're at. So we'll bring it in December. If there's not too much questions on that one, then maybe we can pass in December. If there's a fair amount of council questions, I think, you know, more realistically, we can target a January timeframe. I think, you know, more realistically, we can target a January timeframe for passage of that. But, so my suggestion for now is to table.
Okay. Is there, I don't know about the December workshop, is that, is there space on it, potentially, or?
Daniel was like, thinking for January, so we could probably on Januaries.
Yeah, I think December, I think the January works, yeah, I think the January is probably going to be the vote time. But we might be, let me think with this eight o'clock, if we can put that in there.
Okay. Yeah, just a thought. Whatever works best for the staff.
Something brief to take some quick.
You guys know better than we do about the agenda. Okay, so do I have a motion to table?
So moved. I'll second.
Second. All those in favor? Table, thank you. We're now at the consent agenda. Items are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. There is no consent agenda item. I gotta read ahead here.
But you nailed that. I know, you really did. Maybe I'll put that before it for you next time.
I kind of thought you just wanted to read.
Yeah, well, at this point, I'm just going for it. New business, number 11, public hearing and action on the applications for renewal for the following licenses. Jeff Kelly Locut's DBA 86 this, 125 Main Street for renewal of a class, city class B license, vicular liquor and amusement, and renewal of estate restaurant, class three and four malt liquor and wine license. Ellsworth Suites, 147 Bucksport Road for renewal of a city lodging license. NEH 15 LLC DBA Comfort Inn, 130 High Street for renewal of a city lodging license. Tysono, 321 High Street for renewal of a class C license, vicular and liquor, and renewal of estate, class three and four malt liquor and wine license. And 207 Collectibles LLC DBA Ellsworth Candlepin Alley, 25 Eastward Lane, Suite 6 for renewal of a class B, city class B license, vicular liquor and amusement, and renewal of estate on-premise beer-only license. How would the council like to proceed with agenda item number 11?
This is, this is usually the point where councillor Stein would ask if everything is in order, that the paperwork has been completed, there's been no concerns.
Nope.
Raised.
Great.
And then you open a public hearing?
Yep. Any comments from council before I open the public meeting, hearing?
Are they moved as a slate, or one at a time?
Moved as a slate.
Okay.
Unless anyone would like to, I guess, move it out. Seeing no comments from council, I will now open the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to approach the DSN, providing comments on these proposed renewals, please do so now.
And if any owners of businesses are here, it's always good to hear from them.
She said. Close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed on this agenda item?
I have a question. I always forget with these suggested motions, instead of reading the whole thing out, I can say, move to approve as written, is that, or as stated? So what do I go, when I want to not, like?
Works for me.
Okay.
I mean, they have the suggested motion here.
Yes, but instead of like reading the whole?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, move, move to approve as written.
Seconded as written. Any discussion from council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Animus approved. We also have a new business, Danny's Pizza, 248 State Street, Suite 5, for a new city class C license, vicular and liquor, and a new state restaurant on-premise beer and wine license. This being a new business, is anyone from Danny's Pizza here tonight? Do you, we'd love to hear from, anytime we hear new business, we all want to, especially if it's a restaurant, we want to hear about it.
We have, we heard pizza.
Yeah, especially pizza. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Hi, I'm Dan Baldridge. Nice to meet you all. Working tirelessly for the last two months trying to open Danny's Pizza down at the Mill Mall. And everything has moved along very nicely, and looks beautiful in there, and we're ready to go.
All right. That sounds good to me. Councillor?
What style pizza are you making now?
It's going to be like a New York-style pizza.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah.
Do you have anchovies?
I do not.
Correct.
Can you make a new pizza, councillor Martineau?
Councillor Carol, anchovy pizza.
Councillor Carol, anchovy pizza.
duly noted.
Just to be clear, it's not a condition of approval.
No.
I have a question, if I may, and it's really not that pertinent, but is this a new enterprise for you, or do you have others in other towns, or?
No, I do not. This is my first time doing this. I've been a chef most of my life, and have run a lot of restaurants and kitchens throughout my career. And this is my first opportunity to do my own business, late in my career, but never too late.
Great.
Yep.
Great.
And not using a walker, why would it be late in life?
Good point.
Any other questions for Danny? Seeing none, you are released from your obligatory couple of comments. Do I have a suggested motion on?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that Danny's Pizza, at 248 State Street, Suite 5, is approved for, on, as it's written.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Second, okay. That may be Steve's first second, I don't know. Look at that. He must really be excited for this pizza.
Well, I'm hungry.
Excellent. Any further discussion from the council on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say pizza. Okay, there we go, unanimous. Thank you very much. Welcome to Ellsworth's business community.
I like new business.
When's the opening day?
License tomorrow.
Opening day is probably going to be the day I'm writing the license.
There we go.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Council agenda number 12, council order number 112500, presentation from Henry Solutions on the water rate case plan. Councillor, Chair, City Manager, beers?
Yeah, we'll bring up our consultant on this effort on the water rate case plan.
Hi, my name's Nick Henry. I've been retained by the city to look at your water department rates, and knowing that we've got a major treatment plant project going on, making sure that we are going to be set up in the water department to fully fund operations and these new debt service payments that are coming on in the future when that treatment plant goes operational. So I, through my company, have served the water sewer industry for almost two decades, so it's kind of just, it's what I've always done. And one of the things I do is walk water, regulated water departments or districts through the Public Utilities Commission process for increasing your rates. Because as a regulated entity, you cannot just increase your consumer rates without going through the PUC and the process that they have laid out. And so, I've been retained by the city to kind of walk through that process, and kind of come up with the best strategy that is best for the department as well as the customers. And so, one thing that was a little bit problematic for us is there's a rule with the Public Utilities Commission where what you charge the city for the public fire protection, hydrants, is set by a calculation in a standard called chapter 69. And so, that standard, when you walk through the calculation, it says, of your total amount of revenue that you need to operate your water department, this percentage can be charged, and actually, it dictates this percentage will be charged to the city for public fire protection. So when we walk through that calculation today for Ellsworth, it's 30%. So when we need X amount of dollars to run the water department, 30% of that number gets charged to the city as public fire protection. The problem is currently the city's percentage is 26, 25, 26%. So with a rate filing, you're required to reset that rate. So it was problematic in that where we wanted, the ideal was to do two 7% rate increases over the next two years, where everybody's rates go up 7% this year, 7% next year. We're all in this the same. The problem was, that doesn't reset the rate for public fire protection to 30%. So what we found is to reset that rate, public fire protection, i.e. the city, was going to have to see a much higher percentage increase. So with an already-approved city budget, we had to kind of pause and evaluate the best approach on the city for that increase in its budget. So what we've come up with is essentially a three-step increase for the water department's consumers. So step one is a one and a half percent increase, essentially March 1st of 2026. And under the PUC rules, that's called an easy filing. No reset of your public fire protection is needed. It's minimal impact on your already-approved city budget. Step two is going to be a 7% overall revenue increase, effective July 1st of 2026. So a 7% overall increase, well, what does that mean? That means our metered customers, not our fire protection, will go up roughly 5%, and our public fire protection is going to go up 11% as we start to reset this rate to 30%. And then, so that's July 1st of '26, July 1st of '27, again, as we're taking these incremental steps, knowing that this water treatment plan is coming on, is going to be completed. We're going to do another rate increase that's going to increase fire protection another 18%. So you can see there's some big hits required to bring up that public fire protection. So the question is, how did we get here? Why is fire protection so out of line? Your last big rate increase was in 2023. And so, since that time, that was set at 30%. Life is good. But since that rate increase in '23, the blessing for the city is, or the water department is, metered customers, we've added so much, we've had so much development. We've added those metered customer rates, so it's generated more revenue. That's amazing. That's what we hope for. But the problem is, that revenue is driving up the overall revenue, but public fire doesn't change. So every year we add more revenue, the public fire protection goes from 30% to 29% to 28%. And so now we get to this point where we have to reset. And so, that's our best strategy for balancing water department needs, but also, on the city side of things, trying to maintain some consistency and flow through the city budget. That's a pretty high level of kind of where we're going. We were going to kind of open it up. I know there was a lot of information in your packet that really summarized everything very nicely. I guess I would take questions, comments, concerns, or?
Yeah, I just had a couple, just a little background to add for those that are newer to this process. We're putting together a $20 million new water treatment plant over at Branch Lake. So it's part of your new councillor tours. We may or may not get out there. It's a hike. It's also a beautiful area, but the age of that building and that system shows pretty significantly. And with Jackson Labs, which is an enormous water intake with all the new customers, that's great in the system, but, you know, our water department can kind of show you, we are, there's some months this summer where we're toggling at like pretty much max capacity. So this is going to be a great project for the future of Ellsworth, to help really grow into the next decades of the city's growth cycle. But it's a very expensive plant. There's a whole range of, it's fully funded in terms of grants, some of which were, and then very low interest loans from a variety of sources. So we've reached the funding goals, but we're going to have this larger debt service come online once the building finishes. So we're trying to look ahead to say, hey, we don't want to, you know, all of a sudden wake up as a city, or our citizens, to this huge increase. We want to start kind of staggering that, so it's not felt so directly in the near term. But that's why we hired Henry Solutions. If we would have just gone forward with that rate case, we could have been in year one with this huge increase to our water just from the city side, just to pay for the fire protection piece. So thank you to you for. It's nice to finally meet you in person. We had like a two-hour conversation by phone that was the most complicated financial numbers.
The infrastructure needs to be improved. So, you know, you got to pay for it somehow. And ratepayers. Yeah, rate's got to go up. And we're going to have to improve on it even more, because there's going to be more, more, more systems that are going to need to be added to take care of the older stuff that's already in the ground.
It's also interesting how you're kind of punished as a city for growth in terms of expense to the city, because as you get more ratepayers, there's more people paying the system, that 30% becomes more. And that's, that's where the, so the ratepayers will fund their side of it, but the city holding 30% of the fire protection, that is on all of the taxpayers. So we're going to be looking to, say, 8% in this next cycle, and then 17%?
It's a, it's an 11, and then an 18. But essentially, it's going up 145,000.
Yeah. It's quite a chunk of change, but, yeah.
Councillor White?
I, I'm not familiar with this chapter 69, public fire protection revenue requirement. So we pay this 30% to the, this goes to the state.
The water department.
The water department.
It's the city's side.
The city, okay, so we pay it directly to our water department, this 30% for fire protection.
Correct.
Go ahead. It stays in our budget and in our departments. It's just, okay.
I think it was like 400,000 this year. I'm sure I managed.
For public fire? You're currently paying 465,000 approximately.
And then what does that money get spent on? How does that money, how's that money used?
So it goes into, so comes out of the city's general fund, goes into water department, and it covers salaries and wages for water department, electricity to run plants, materials and supplies to fix stuff, the insurances for the water department.
That doesn't sound like fire.
I was going to say that doesn't sound like fire. That's the interesting thing about it. It's kind of just this 30% figure, and it's, you know, that's what the requirement is.
And the, yes, so the PUC has set it, but what it's paying for is, the water system is designed, all this infrastructure cost, to, in the unfortunate event, there is a fire, that we can hook up to the hydrants and put out that fire. And so, that's one of the premises behind this whole charge, is that we've designed a system to be able to handle fire flow. And based on how the PUC has designed all public utility, or all waters, that this is how they've said, this is the proper way to allocate funds to the city for, we can't bill the city for the water it uses out of the hydrants.
Yeah, I see.
It's on demand to be there if you need it.
Thank you.
Councillor Halloran?
I was going to say that a little different way. One of the things that I learned, or I think I learned, is the city is paying the water department for the capacity, not the use. Is that fair to say?
That's a great way to put it.
Okay, so again, it's the capacity in the event you need it, but it's not being used, hopefully.
Councillor Smith N?
Thank you, sir. I think, Steve, to build on what you said, this has been very helpful, because we heard this last month, and I'm still trying to piece it together. It covers the capacity, the availability, and there is no additional charge for use. Those of us on water pay quarterly. So it actually is capacity and use. Does that fit, Steve, to what you were thinking? It covers the cost of the capacity and any water that's used. There's no additional fee for that. So.
Hopefully, there's no water used. But my understanding was, the first time I saw that big bill on the finance committee, I'm, oh. And, but, what I learned, and it sounds like if, if... And, but what I learned, and it sounds like if there, and who am I to answer this, but I think that if there was a big use, the bill doesn't change. Is that fair?
Right. So, and again, this is, this is beginning to make sense, I really appreciate this, that that, meeting that 30% mark and the numbers that you said, a fairly high percentage increase, that's paid as part of the city's general budget versus the rate payers who pay. There's going to be some increases to cover their uses. That's, thank you. I love clarity and I can understand what we're working on now. I appreciate it.
And I didn't go over process, just real quick. So what's going to happen is we're going to file documents with the Public Utilities Commission. We are going to notify all customers through a customer letter, most likely a newspaper notice and then social media, I assume, like your normal channels. We're going to hold a public hearing for every customer to attend if they so choose and get feedback, questions, thoughts, comments, concerns. Then after that public hearing, you do one final filing with the PUC. So we still have quite a bit of process left for this whole thing, where customers will have ample time to kind of weigh in, I guess. And they also have the ability to petition the Public Utilities Commission to stop the rate increase if they so choose and really open up a full investigation by the Public Utilities Commission and the Office of Public Advocate. I would think that would be highly unlikely to happen, but that is available to customers if they so choose.
Thank you. Any other questions from councillors? City manager?
No.
Great. Well, there's no action for us. This was just an update. So this is very helpful. Thank you very much. Thanks for your support of the city. We much appreciate it. Great. Agenda item 13, council order number 112501, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to waive foreclosures on specific properties.
Sue McLean, tax collector. I have four properties that I have been dealing with the owners. Foreclosure notices, automatic foreclosure notices went out, but I held these four because they're, they're working with me. They're really trying. And what I would like to do is to waive the foreclosure, excuse me, it doesn't take it completely off the table. It will stay leaned. And it will just allow them to make the payments, if that's what the situation is. There's one property that is for sale that has a possible buyer. It would foreclose before their closing could happen, so this will push it out. I can, in the future, issue an automatic foreclosure notice and bring that back if that's what happens. If they don't make the payments or if we go quite a while and the property's not sold and now they have no buyers. But with these particular four, I really think there's good reason to do that. And so I'm just asking for the approval in order to offer this help to those that need it.
Great. Thank you, Sue. Questions from councillors? So Shay, Councilor Hall?
I'm all for doing everything we can to help people get through a hard time. Are we, these people are trying hard, and can you give us an idea of how many in this process are going to automatic foreclosure that is not trying hard?
I sent out 44 automatic foreclosure notices, not including these. These are not in that because I have their notices here. That will go out tomorrow if the council decides they don't want to do this.
And if I may ask, I'm all for this, don't get me wrong, but are we, the people that aren't on this list, are we, these people earned the spot on this list to get some special treatment? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I'm not so sure I would necessarily call it special treatment, but yes, I know where you're going with that. One of them has already signed a payment plan with me, assuming or hoping that it would be okay. And I've talked to another one, another person. All of these I have had great conversations with. These are the people that have reached out to me and I just felt like this was a good place and a good thing to do for them.
Questions, Steve? Councillor Carroll? Councillor Smith N?
Smith N, just noting, I am really happy that you've got people who are working with you, those payment plans, cut them some slack because they're working. And then there's one where it has to do with the fact that there's a lawsuit settling out who owns what property. And it just makes sense to sit and let that work its way through the court before we intervene. So, yeah, it was heartening to read through the documents that you shared and understand what's going on. I appreciate it. We all, I think, appreciate the work that you're doing to work with people when they step forward.
Yes.
Or in the middle of a lawsuit, it makes no sense to jump into the middle of that fray. Just let it settle and then move forward. So thank you for that.
I do. Councillor Arnaud?
Are there negative implications to applying for that hardship program? Is that why she does not want?
I, no, there isn't. The problem with that one, according to the conversation we had, was it was a lot of work and she just didn't think she could pull everything together that was required on that. And I understand. I've seen, I've deal with those applications. There is a lot to it. And a lot of people, from what I've found in talking to them, because we also, along with the hardship application, our ordinance says we have to, they also have to fill out, excuse me, a general assistance application. It doesn't necessarily go to general assistance, but people don't like that.
No, I understand.
Because that's not what they want. They just, they want to make the payments. They don't want to request that the city abate it, give them a hardship abatement. They strongly feel they want to do this on their own, but they need some help. And so that's what I'm trying to do.
Any other questions from the council? City manager, no? Well, it's not scheduled for a public hearing, so I think we can proceed to voting. The way it has been laid out, as I understand it, we have to vote on each property individually to, if we are going to provide this foreclosure waiver.
Yeah.
If it's easier for the council, I'm happy to read the suggested motion and then ask for folks to make a motion on each one. So I'm going to start with that at, for the first one, move to approve council order number 112501, item A, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to waive foreclosure on the building located at 1311 Happy Town Road, map 108, lot 13-0ON-000.
Move to approve council order 112501.
You don't have to read the whole thing.
I don't.
No, you're going to say, as suggested.
As written, as presented.
Perfect. I'll do, I'll make it easier on you guys. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the council? All those in favor? Second one. Suggested motion, move to approve council order 1125011, item B, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to waive foreclosure on the property located at 59 Northeast Cove Way, map 106, lot 50-000-000. Any like to make a motion on the suggested motion?
I'd like to make an amendment to that. The council order is number 1125001.
What did I say?
I think 5011.
So corrected. Anyone like to second the correction?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second on the suggested motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anamis? Suggested motion, move to approve council order 112501, item C, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to waive foreclosure on the property located at 547 Bangor Road, map 58, lot 14-3-000. Have a motion? Say, as suggested motion?
As suggested motion.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor? There it is. Suggested motion, move to approve council order 112501, item D, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to waive foreclosure on the property located at 42 Bucksport Road, map 133, lot 7-000-000. Have a motion?
I move that we accept the suggested motion.
I second.
Second, excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you for your hard work, Sue.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to stay right here because I get the next one.
Yes, you do. Don't go anywhere. Agenda item 14, council order number 112502, discussion of potential action on a late redemption by Benjamin Keith Harris for past due FY '23 through '25 taxes on map 106, lot 49.
Yes, Mr. Harris came in a couple of times and he's paid everything that's owed and is asking to have it deeded back to him. I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but I have to come here and ask you. As of right now, his balance due is zero. So it's up to you whether we deed it back to him or not.
Councillors, any questions for Sue?
I just have a clarification. This was a, this was a foreclosure?
It was a foreclosure. It foreclosed for the '23 taxes, which, I don't even know what year I'm in now. It would have been last year, I think, that it foreclosed, that the '23 taxes foreclosed. And I don't know, I don't know what happened. He didn't get the mail. I don't know. You hear everything. But end result is, he came in, was very surprised that it was foreclosed on, and paid the taxes. So he paid what was owed to us and asked to have the property back. He knew that if he was making that money, if he was making those, that payment, and you decided not to return the property to him, he's not getting his money back. It's, he was paying back taxes, but he still did that. And so I'm asking to see if we can...
You know, I'm surprised it doesn't automatically happen that if someone catches up that we close that.
It's honestly, it's in the charter, charter or our ordinance. I've got to find, clarify that. But we have talked about making that change because it does seem like if somebody's going to get everything caught up, that I should be able to just deed it back to them. But anyway, so that's why I'm here, because the charter said I had to be.
This, there's a stated redemption period for this action and this person is outside of that redemption period?
Mm-hmm. Very much, yep. It's, you get, after the foreclosure date, you get 30 days of redemption period. So, yeah, he's, he's outside of it, which is why I have to come here.
But credit to him, he's stepped forward and paid it, not knowing if he was going to get it back.
Right.
How does the bookkeeping, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
How does the bookkeeping work on that? It's a property that the city owns and he comes in to pay taxes on city-owned property? And that works?
Well, it works because he, he still has on our account money owed to us.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's why it works, yeah.
You ready for a motion?
If there's no other councillor comments, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Okay. I would move to approve the request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to accept payment on the tax-acquired property located at 53 Northeast Cove Way and authorize the city manager to release the said property through the municipal quitclaim deed.
Just a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion, councillors? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anamis, thank you, Sue.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate you, Sue. Council agenda item 15, number 112503, update from the city manager on 66 North Street. We have our code enforcement officer, Okeem Diaz.
I might just give a little background to some of our newer councillors here. So at the last council meeting, we had a citizen who brought forward some, some very concerning issues regarding a property that was nearby that was, you know, pretty clearly a threat to public health, to, to the neighborhood. There was a fair amount of trash in the area that was in violation of our codes and ordinances. And, you know, so we've had a couple of conversations with the citizens on that neighborhood and that block. Our code enforcement office has been doing a great job of kind of following up on a lot of the details here. We actually were out there this morning as well, very kindly enough, invited to nearby neighbor's home to talk a little bit more. This is one I think council will probably see throughout their tenure here. We had one on the Fairgrounds Road. You know, it was a two-and-a-half-year process on condemnation and a kind of tear down of that building. You know, oftentimes there can be kind of a mismatch between expectations for how to take care of some of these properties and the tools and resources that the city has to do so. So, you know, we're moving ahead with all of our legal mechanisms and I'll have Robert, our code enforcement officer, do a little bit more discussion on that, but we'll send it over to Robert.
How's it going, Robert Grant, code enforcement officer? So in the packet that I provided, I went through the whole history of this property starting from April, when there was a fire at the property. It's a duplex. The apartment in the rear caught fire. However, the front apartment is, was untouched by the fire and is still technically livable. I was unaware at that time that because of the fire in the back, the property in the front was unable to get electricity. And they also, in the meantime, have lost their public water. That was, it was shut off due to a broken pipe in the front yard. It's on their property, it's on that property owner to fix, not the city. So we began, this summer, we began sending letters to clean up the yard, take care of the property, to the property owner. And unbeknownst to me, in August, sorry, the, their mortgage holder took the house back, which unfortunately resets the clock on my letter process. So in the meantime, the members of the neighborhood came forth and were upset with the progress... So in the meantime, the members of the neighborhood came forth and were upset with the progress of all this going on. So to help alleviate that, I actually moved to a, an expedited letter format, where normally, in the past, I've told the council how we have a 30-day letter process. Well, that was always the policy for the office, but that's, there's nothing hard and fast. It says you have to have a 30-day policy. So we moved it to a 20-day policy on this. So today is the day that we sent out our third letter, which we can actually go down to a 10-day, according to legal counsel. So our 10-day letter will go out in the morning. I just wanted to give you the update before I actually send it. We're gonna have the letter going to the mortgage holder, letting them know that nothing has been done on the property to resolve the issues, the ongoing issues, and that they have 10 days to clean it up, or we're gonna, we're gonna take it to, we're gonna refer it to our legal counsel and take them to court and force them to clean it up.
So it's kind of where we're at. There's also, you know, a potential for condemnation. The district attorney has informed our police folks that if we do that, they will not give us the authority to remove the individual that's in the home. So that kind of makes it a bit of a complication there, especially with, and then we kind of get into a different legal issue.
Yeah. I can, so the other side of that is, there's an unknown if we condemn the home, if the mortgage holder will then see that home as not worth putting the time and effort into saving, and they will let this individual live there without any eviction process that they are now responsible for. And then we would be back in a similar situation to where we're at on the Fairgrounds Road, with someone still living in the home that we can't get rid of. So it, actually condemning the home may actually make the process more complicated.
It reverses the liability back to the city, as opposed to the mortgage lien holder, and fines on them to do their processes. I would also note, though, that, you know, this is a home that's already experienced a fire. It's jumped the electricity to basically pull straight from the power pole in, which does not seem very safe. There's no water, there's no sewer. So there is a public health aspect to this that, you know, our code enforcement office and teams are looking into. So, you know, the legal liability is one piece, but the general safety and health and wellness of the people in the neighborhood and the quickness of that process is another. So we're kind of pursuing both paths at once and keeping both options on the table.
I understand why we have procedure and that we need to follow procedure for fairness, of course, but the woman that came in last month was under a lot of distress about the situation. Were we able to at least give her resources or, in order for her to help mitigate the situation that was at her house, or we just kind of?
She's in the audience.
Hi. Yeah, how are we able?
We haven't, we haven't done anything on that front. It's, we could try that potentially, but that would be a cost to the city. I'm not sure, that's not really, also not really my area to do something like that.
Yeah, I feel like this is like coming again with the chickens that were, and the roosters that were next door, and, you know, there's the bureaucracy, the slowness of government. People continue to stay in distress for a long period of time while we try to legally do what we can. And I don't know if it's code enforcement or what, but how we can at least provide resources for our residents in order to, for them to be able to take it into their own hands for pest control or whatever that may be. But I don't know if we're gathering that information and at least providing it in the code enforcement office.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly provide some information on, you know, who you could turn to for that sort of thing, but.
But we don't currently do.
No. That was never something that was, that was even dreamt of in the code office. So, you know, that could be a discussion later on for a larger property maintenance ordinance, you know. We already have one, but it's fairly lax. We could have a more robust discussion on that later, probably.
Yeah. I'd love to see that for our residents, just that we can at least give them avenues of solution, possible solutions that they could get.
Nobody likes to see the situation that's going on there.
So, Helen?
I understand that you have to go through the legal steps and the letters and so on and so forth, but if this is owned by a mortgage company, it would seem to me that a simple phone call to the mortgage company might jump-start the process, and it might not, but it's, you wonder if the letters go to the right department in the right mortgage and et cetera.
I did speak to one of the representatives on the phone and through emails, I believe the emails were in the packet. They were reluctant because the person is still there to touch the, you know, what we would consider trash outside the home, because they're worried that the person that's still there would consider that his personal property. And they're worried about a lawsuit on that end. So they're unwilling to move very quickly on this. So I think that's why the letter process, really, by getting them to court, it's gonna force action one way or the other. Unfortunately, it's a slow process, but I've tried to expedite that as much as I can.
Just on that note, you know, the code enforcement officer doesn't have the authority to go on anyone's property without permission, and the only way to actually get something in order is you have to go to court, and you have to get a judge to issue an order saying, you know, "This is a violation, clean it up." And the benefit there is that process, if the city's successful, which I think it would be in this instance, statute requires the city to recuperate its attorney's fees from the defendant, which here is the mortgage company, in addition to the $100 a day minimum fine. So I think in Robert's memo, you noted that they don't, you know, as soon as they, if they're not gonna act with these notice of violation, a court filing typically gets people's attention.
A $100 a day fine starts.
Yeah. Plus every hour that our lawyers work on doing that would be recuperated. So I think that we are limited to some degree in what we can do, and it sounds like, from what I've heard, that the city's doing what it can legally, and it's just an unfortunate situation.
There's that extra wrinkle where the mortgage company took it in the middle of the summer, and I didn't know it until September, so it slowed everything down again.
Well, considering the matter, I understand if you'd like any public comment on this. If you could approach Diaz, if that's okay.
Don't take me while I sit too long.
It's okay. I know, I've been there. Take your time, please. And if you could just say your name for the record.
My name is Janice Garland. I currently live in that home. I, for you who weren't here the last meeting, over 40 years ago, I came to Ellsworth. The house had been burnt by fire. I was raising two sons of my own, had a job. I often went to the owner wanting to buy the place, and everybody thought I was crazy because it had been burnt by fire. I myself tore everything apart. I had an electrician and a plumber do the major work, the rest of the work. The other work, I did myself. I put walls up, I put ceilings up, I put floors in. I did everything I could to provide a home for my children. I raised my children and half the neighborhood in that house. I was the neighborhood mother. I was home when the kids got home from school. They came to my house, had cookies and milk, did their homework. I mean, so all the neighborhood is affected by me losing that house. The house has to come down. The rats have been in the walls, in the ceilings, chewing. So there's rat feces in the walls and in the ceilings. I have asthma, and this is killing me. I have to sleep at night with my bedroom window open, even in the cold, because I cannot breathe. So therefore, I have lost my home, but I don't want to see my neighbors lose their home. And it will. I mean, it's gonna, I know it's gonna spread. I have bought buckets, I mean buckets, of rat poison. The last bucket I bought, I put it in my kitchen sink. The next morning, I woke up, the rats had chewed a hole in the top of the bucket to get to the poison. I mean, in my own kitchen sink. I just want to thank Charlie for the work he's done. Mr. O'Halloran for being my right-hand man and my shoulder to lean on. Robbie Grant for being the code enforcement and doing all he can to alleviate this problem. And the other gentleman that was there this morning, I don't remember his name, but they all came in my home. We sat there, we discussed what was going on, what they could do and what they couldn't do. I'm just, maybe the codes need to be changed in Ellsworth to prevent something from this happening again. I mean, I'm losing my, I've lost, I can't even just say I've lost my home. We've got a new home. We bought a home out on the Happy Town Road that we'll be moving into in December. And that house eventually will come down, and maybe something new will be put there. But in the meantime, I've lost my home for 40 years. It is nothing, I mean, it's, I'm sorry. That was more than a home story. It's something I did. I worked it myself. I fixed it myself. I was proud of my home. I mean, those that were in it this morning, you know, it wasn't the best home. It still needed work to be done. Every house is a work in progress, especially something like that. But it was home as comfortable. It was warm, as everybody knew. But I just want to thank the city for what they are trying to do to help me and the neighbors. And I just, you know, think maybe they ought to, like I said, consider changing the codes so that people can't have garbage like that piled up. I mean, we got rid of the garbage there several years, over 40 bags that were hauled off their porches. I encouraged her to get rid of the 15 junk cars he had in the yard. But, I mean, I just want to thank the city and for what your work you're doing. And hopefully, we can save the neighborhood from the rats. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Greatly appreciated.
Janice, and it was Andrew who came with us also from our code office, and Andrew, Robert, and I had a long discussion afterwards on, you know, just with this individual property, but as you mentioned, Tabitha, you know, we've, kind of the rooster issue with another neighbor, and, you know, as you mentioned, Patrick, it becomes one person's property rights versus another. And then there's all kinds of legal complications we have to consider for that. But I know the codes office and I are thinking of how we can just make that faster, make the process clear. We've talked about maybe doing kind of an op-ed with code on exactly what the city has in terms of its toolkit for these types of things. And thank you for inviting us into your home. The wood pellet stove they have in there was incredible.
Like I told you, my neighbor used to come across the road, she's an Alphabell woman, she used to come across the road four o'clock every morning.
Yeah.
We had dinner, she knew we had dinner at five. She'd come over at four. I'd feed her dinner, she'd go lay down with my futon, and so, and I'd be cleaning the house up and getting the kitchen all cleaned up, and I'd go up and look. She'd be asleep with, with futon. I'd raise a bed up, cover her up in the blanket, and go to bed. In the morning, at five, during the night, she woke up, went home. It was 20 years.
It was the last time my feet were warm, so I, and there was a couple other neighbors there. They mentioned, you know, Janice has been the neighborhood mom for a long time, and people stop in there. So thank you for all the work you're doing on that. We'll try to move as quickly as we possibly can here and.
Is this something, I know it's not on the agenda, but the animal, control officer would be able to? I remember in New York, they dealt with rats all the time. I know this is the second animal-related issue that's come up here that we don't have an animal, a animal control officer for.
I think that the rat problem is more of a pest control than ACO, but.
I think they deal with golden doodles.
Yeah, I think it's more in the public health realm.
Yeah.
So the, I lived in Clinton for quite a while, and we had a place on Main Street that was very, very problematic. A lot of trash, a lot of junk cars. And if you've been through Clinton, you've probably seen the different color roofing materials he put on, from anywhere from blue plastic tarp to green to, sometimes it was multicolored tarp, depending upon how long they'd last. But they, to clean up the mess, to take care of everything, the, it was quite a legal process the town had to go through to do that. And on top of that, they finally, he didn't pay property taxes, and so the town was able to foreclose on it after a lengthy legal battle. So it does take a while to get it, unfortunately, get these, some of these remedies taken care of. And again, like Robert said, the ordinance, there's a bunch of ordinances that need to be updated, and they have to have a little more teeth in them, so.
Thank you. Any other counselor questions or comments on this matter? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number 16, council order number 112504, public hearing and action on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34 Personnel Ordinance. And we have our Human Resources Manager, Gary Taylor, here. Gary, you want to kick it off?
All right. Good evening. Gary Taylor, HR Manager. So I am here to request the council's approval for proposed amendments to Chapter 5, Section 3 of the city's personnel ordinance.
Hey, Gary. Pause your video real quick. Hey, Robert. It's all right. Now, take your time. Robert, you can use my office, too.
Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead, Gary.
Would you like me to start over?
If you'd like to.
Okay. All righty. So I'm here to request the council's approval for proposed amendments to Chapter 5, Section 3 of the city's personnel ordinance. This is pertaining to the observed holidays, and this is necessary to align with the four-day work week that is now in effect for City Hall. After reviewing the observed holiday schedule and taking a survey of several other municipalities on a four-day work week, we have prepared the following proposal. Since the Friday after Thanksgiving is a recognized holiday, we are proposing that for employees on a regular four-day work week schedule, a 10-hour floating holiday will be provided in lieu of the standard day off. The floating holiday must be used within 12 months and cannot be accumulated. Currently, moving on from that, currently, recognized holidays that fall on Saturdays are observed on the preceding Friday, and recognized holidays that fall on Sundays are observed on the following Monday. Due to the varying work schedules, we are proposing that for five-day work week employees, that schedule would remain. So holidays falling on Saturdays will be observed on the preceding Friday. Holidays falling on Sunday will be observed on the following Monday. And for four-day work week employees, holidays falling on Friday will be observed on the preceding Thursday, and holidays falling on Sunday will be observed on the following Monday. Any holidays falling on a Saturday will be compensated with a 10-hour floating holiday to be used within 12 months and cannot be accumulated.
Any questions for Gary from the council? Counselors, Smith and.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm looking for an understanding. I read through this ahead of the meeting, and it seems like you're trying to create equity between four-day work week and five-day work week. Does this end up the same, that the, like, percentage? You know, when I developed this for my organization, I know how many paid days off there are, but now where there are 10-hour days and eight-hour days, are we ending up with the same, where five-day work week people have the same either paid hours or percentage of holiday payoff as the four-day? There's, it's convoluted to look at why this comes forward the way that it does.
Yeah, it's a lot of language. Good question. So all of our holidays, or the holidays are listed out in personnel ordinance and/or the collective bar. the personnel ordinance, collective bargaining agreements. Yep. So with that being said, yeah, it does equal out because, you know, if you have employees that are working five days or working five, eight-hour days, and then they're getting the day off paid, so, or, you know, I'm looking at it as a 40-hour work week, I guess, is how we would kind of recognize that. Does that answer the question?
Well, it's, I mean, I'm gonna defer to you because you put more time into this than I have, but it's, it's an odd, on a four-day work week, a paid day off is 20%, 25% of your day, of your work week versus 20%. And just, I, I read in here, your goal is to have equity between the four-day week and the five-day week. So, again, even having read through it, I, it's more than I could...
Yeah, I guess, you know, I never listed it that way. That is a very interesting perspective. We're, so we have to honor the holidays as listed, and the ordinances or the union contracts. And I guess we're looking to make the, the week whole. So, as opposed to getting...
Okay, that's one way to look at it.
Yeah, so as, I, that's a very interesting perspective, though. I, I did not look at it that way at all, but we're looking to make, you know, everyone is, if you're a non-union employee that follows the personnel ordinance and Christmas is an observed holiday, if you work a five-day work week, you know, yeah, your holiday would be equivalent to eight hours. Or a four-day work week employee, the holiday would be equivalent to 10 hours, but at the end of the week, you're still getting that day off, and you still have a full 40-hour paycheck, but you don't actually work the holiday, with the exception of public safety, of course. But, does that, because the percentage, that's an interesting way to look at it, but I did not consider that.
I don't have anything else to add. I just, like I said, I looked at it a different way and was having a hard time reconciling it.
Yeah, I, it's an interesting way to look at it, but, sorry, my apologies, but, yeah...
Councillor Halloran?
Did this come from employees feeling that it was not a fair transaction? Where, what's the origin of this?
So, it's because we switched to a four-day work week for City Hall. These, the holidays were all listed in the personnel ordinance, so we had to adjust. Either we take the holidays out of the personnel ordinance, or we adjust the, the way that we recognize them for those, the four-day work week.
So you haven't had a lot of complaints with personnel?
No.
It's just trying to, it's an adjustment from the four-day work week?
Correct. Exactly. Yep.
And it looks like Thanksgiving Friday may be the first time it's relevant.
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions, or any other questions from councillors? This is a public hearing, and so I'm going to open the public hearing. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue, please approach the Diaz and say your name. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to move to adopt amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34 Personnel Ordinance, as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Twice at one night.
Hold on a second.
Any further discussion on those motions? Seeing none. All those in favor? unanimous? Thank you, Carrie. Okay, excuse me. Agenda Item Number 17, Council Order Number 112505, Discussion and Potential Action on Temporary Power for Courthouse Road. Senator Andrew?
Yes, this is, I'm requesting that suggested motion to reject the sole bid for the temporary power. And the reason I'm saying that is I've recently received a, a little bit of a grace period from the judiciary until March, and I'm trying to push that back till May, until the time that they'll actually need power at the site for the Courthouse Road area. So, to take you all back, and for the councillors that may want to get a little more information on this, at ellsworthmain.gov/courthouse, we had all of the public hearings, I think three or four workshops on this project, on kind of the, all the background on the relocation of this judiciary's courthouse on the Surrey Road, which received a fair amount of community and council pushback on the location in a neighborhood zone, and the request that we look into additional options on what, where the courthouse could be. After a pretty lengthy public information sessions and request for information on additional options, the Wardwell property, which is about 140 acres in full between High and Main Street, kind of behind the LL Bean area, 17 acres or so of that was identified by council and the community as probably the best location for the courthouse to be. It's in our urban growth district, pretty close to the water and sewer areas, and it met all the judiciary's needs for this $55 million public infrastructure project, which will probably be the biggest public infrastructure project the city is likely to see for some time. The big caveat with that was that it needed to really be off the light, off Maryland, in order for it to be a feasible location to drive into. So the, the deal that was negotiated with the city and the state was for the city to, to extend Maryland point two, two miles to the courthouse location for the new courthouse, and that, as part of the developer agreement, that those aspects of the, the new location would hold to the sim, to the same, you know, availability that was on the Surrey Road, so access to power, water, sewer. So we have a lot more time to kind of get water and sewer in there. We've, if you've gone over there, and councillors, I know when we're, especially the new ones, when we're doing our new walkthrough of the area, the, the public works team has already cleared that 66-foot right-of-way. We purchased the three parcels of land from three additional, sorry, two parcels of land were purchased, and one was gifted from the Wardwells to the city. So all those easements have gone through, the DEPs approved our permit for our road, the engineer has approved the design and submitted a final design. We're still ironing through a few of those pieces. We did look for a potential clerk of the works to kind of oversee that whole process. We only received one bidder on that, in excess of $300,000, so we rejected that. And the judiciary's kind of pushed back their timeline. I think it's about 2028 is when they expect the courthouse to be in there. So the developer agreement really is just that temporary power in the construction road access. We've met the construction road access pieces with our own teams. We've got a little bit of a pushback on the, the temporary power aspect. I'd prefer to spend, it was $90,000 for the temporary power placement, I would actually prefer to kind of have that be a down payment on the permanent power. And we're so far along in the design process that I think that, you know, we can, we could probably stagger those two things together, so that we're not doing $90,000 in temporary power by January. We're doing, you know, that's, that's really could be better used as a, as installing permanent power down there at a later timeframe. So, that's kind of where I'm at now. I'm gonna have private upcoming finance committee meeting, a quarter-three update on the cost of the road. I did a Q1 and Q2 update previously. You know, we have some, some new figures just on, we have been keeping track of exactly how many hours the public works teams have been out there for. It was a crew of about three people. That was about two weeks to construct the road, but also gravel quantities, et cetera. We also have probably in December coming forward with some digital modernization efforts that we think are really necessary in the public works, parks and rec departments, so that we can get a lot more dialed in on our labor crews, not just for projects, special projects like this, but for all of our projects to get a little bit more visibility into hours, timing, costs, materials, that type of thing as well. So, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of action on this one, a lot of progress has been made, and, but for the time being, I'm looking for a motion to reject all bids on the, reject the sole bid on this one.
On the temporary power? Thank you, Charlie. Any questions, comments from councillors?
I'm excited to hear that you're tracking hours and materials, thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we reject the bids for the temporary power and to...
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Nope, seeing some?
Yeah, I, I kind of, when, when the topic comes back up, I'd like to revisit that, but I'm not a fan of the city putting, being on the hook to put temporary power. It needs to be permanent power. Even then, I think it should be to the final stakeholder of the property, which would be the state judicial system. It just, yeah, because we're gonna have a parcel of property out there that's not gonna be generating any tax income.
Not yet.
I want something that, you know, it's not gonna generate any revenue to help out Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth taxpayer or the residents.
Yeah, I should note, you know, that this is an obligation of the previous city council, and especially those pieces on the developer agreement, the road agreement, these are commitments that, you know, if the city does not meet, the judiciary, very rightly so, would have the ability to sue the, the city and compel us to do that anyway. So, it's, we did discuss a lot of that when this was moving forward about, you know, that these were some of the pieces that were requirements of the judiciary, that they'd have the same kind of right to utilities or access to utilities as the Surrey Road in order to, to move to this area. So that was, that, that one, we, but they've been very flexible this whole time on, hey, you know what? They needed temporary power, that's part of the original developer agreement, they're giving me a little more time because they don't, they don't really need that power in January. So they've been very flexible on that. So can we get that permanent power? That's what I'm really laser focused on, so that we're not, and I'd love to pick your expertise more, Pat, too. I know you've built roads just like this for a good part of your career, so how can we keep doing it in the most cost-efficient way? There is also a bill with the legislature, which I believe passed, to help fund this road up to $750,000 as a, as a, as a split. I think the original cost estimates are about 1.5 million for the total cost to the city of building this road. We don't know if that'll necessarily pass or not, and we'll try to get an update on that piece, too. Also, TIF funding, which we talked about last week, that can be used for public infrastructure and utilities. And while the courthouse might not be the, you know, the, a payer on that rate piece, there is a potential for, once we finish the road, we could have connection fees for, you know, we've built the water, we built the sewer, we've put the, the power out there. The courthouse wouldn't necessarily be a payer to that, but could we create a system or a structure where, you know, the Merrill properties, the Adams properties, the Wardwell properties, there's a fair amount of private development that will be opened up by this road? Those, those taxpayers or those private areas could potentially pay hookup fees into the system. But there's also a lot of antagonism to hookup fees in the city on previous projects as well, so we'll keep on it.
Great. Thank you. So I believe we had a motion and a second to reject all bids. Seeing no other councillor comments, all those in favor? unanimous? Thank you, Charlie. Okay, Agenda Item 18, Council Order Number 112506, Public Hearing and Potential Action on the Return of Surplus Equity from the sale of 16 Fifth Street to the prior owner. City Manager?
Yes, this one, we had a fairly long discussion at the last meeting. Sorry, with the new council, I don't know if you, you got to hear a lot about that, but, you know, it was a many-month conversation with Legal and others on, could we, in fact, do that? Just maybe to give, maybe listeners or folks, give a little background on the, on the parcel. But I believe in 2019 or 2020 is when taxes stopped being paid on that parcel. It was foreclosed on, I believe in 2022, and then 2023 sold by the city. There was a fair amount of excess surplus revenue generated, in excess of $100,000 in that property. And then two months later, the US Supreme Court in a nine-to-zero ruling noted that from a separate case from Minnesota that was in a similar vein, that this was a violation of the Takings Clause of the Constitution, and that cities and towns across the country cannot do that anymore. Some states have actually set up large trust funds to help cities, kind of, that may have had higher liabilities in these categories move forward. The state of Maine doesn't have that. We spent a lot of time analyzing what the full potential liability of doing this would be. This, this really was a very unique piece. Most of the time, the city loses money when they take a property in foreclosure, and if they, and if they, is any surplus money, it's, you know, a, a small fraction of what this is, and a kind of look back of six years. There's also the separate issue of, is it legal for the city? It was legal at the time when they, when the city, according to ordinances, according to state law, that really was the only option, was to, under the current city law, was to keep these excess funds. And could it, you know, the, the city council has pretty wide purview in what they spend public money on, but you can't spend public money on a private purpose. So would this sort of contradiction of a previous council ruling that was legal at the time be considered using public funds for a private purpose? You know, our council looked into this a lot and really felt that the release of any liability from the property owner in this case could be considered a public purpose here. There's really pretty wide latitude that you all have in deciding what's a private or public purpose. One of the things that you don't have latitude in, and specific, is using private money on, or public money on private roads. That was one of the, really, the one specific ones, which we had a separate issue with in the last council that we talked about a lot, so that was interesting to see. But Legal felt that this was, you know, legally allowable, and so we've had some discussion with the, the prior owner. We've come to agreement on the terms. I think the council has, has seen that separately on just the legal documentation. The price point essentially is 2023 sale surplus price plus what we charge as interest as a city when taxes aren't collected, but then backed out pre-2023 standard legal fees, real estate fees for the sale. But we didn't include any staff time or anything like that. So I think this is a fair resolution to, to the issue, and we're gonna, the suggestion is to take it from one of our reserve accounts for the, the general fund, which, you know, this money was placed into the general fund, so we have enough in the general fund reserve to, to fund this.
Thank you, Charlie. Any comments from councillors? Councillor Smith? This one?
I just want to say, I'm, I'm, I think, thank Charlie, thank others involved with finding a resolution to this that's appropriate for the city and does right by the property owner. So it's, I'm looking forward to voting in favor of this motion.
Any other councillors? Seeing none for the time. It is notice of a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to write comments on this issue, please approach the Diaz. Not everyone at once. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Okay, I'll make a motion. Move to authorize the city manager to, to disburse $124,192.49 from the fund balance reserve account to Carrie Kars to refund the surplus proceeds plus applicable interest from the sale of 16 Fifth Street.
Happy to second that.
Second? All those in favor? unanimous? Agenda Item 19, Executive Session to Discuss Personnel Matters in Coordance with MRSA, Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6A. Do I have a motion from the council to go into executive session?
So move?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous? Thank you all for coming. Once we enter, exit an executive session, there's no action that will be taken, we'll just adjourn. So you're welcome to wait outside, but then you come back in and we'll just leave. So, if you'd like, you can, it's probably best for you to leave now.